Let the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, please have a seat. Anyone has a cellphone on them, please place it on silent. Rokevich?
Karlovich?
Here.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Here.
Reese?
Here.
Ister?
All right, so Sunbury has many amazing businesses within our city. Any business that has been operating in Sunbury for 50 years or more who would like to be honored and recognized and who is not on this current list can call the City Clerk's office. Please give us the name of your business, the year it was founded, who founded it, and who currently owns it, and it will be recognized at a future council meeting. At this time, when I name off the business, the owner or the representative, please approach to the front. Whereas, the City of Sunbury recognizes and appreciates the businesses that continue to grow and prosper within the city and contribute to the overall success of the city and its residents. And whereas, these businesses are being congratulated upon the momentous occasion of their longevity of operation. And whereas, throughout their history, they have served their clients with distinction and professionalism, and has become an integral part of Sunbury's history and future. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Kurt Karlovich, being Mayor of the City of Sunbury, County of Northumberland, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, on behalf of Sunbury City Council members and citizens, do hereby congratulate and thank these businesses for operating for 50 years or more, and offers best of wishes for continued growth for years to come. Brewer's Outlet, 50 years. Strike Zone, 56 years. Marlin Sub Shop, 61 years. Glen Raven Fabrics, former textile mill, 64 years. Moyer Electronics, 65 years. Moyer Institute of Dance, 66 years. Squeezing, 71 years. That's 75?
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three years.
Wow.
The Daily Item, 82 years. Benjamin T. Moyer Furniture, 83 years. Purdy Insurance Agency, 93 years. Sunbury Motors, 103 years. David T. Zwyer Funeral Home, 105 years. Wise Markets, 106 years. Gosse Electric, 109 years. Schindler Studio, 110 years. UP, oh, sorry. Sunbury Market House, 117 years. UPMC Susquehanna-Sunbury, formerly Sunbury Community Hospital, 123 years. Sullivan Motors, 129 years. Ollie Gottlob Funeral Home, 129 years. And the Hotel Edison, 147 years. And the motion to pass this proclamation, all these proclamations.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovich?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Are there any audience comment on agenda items only at this time? All right. And to the representatives of each business, if you want, you can stay; if you don't, you can leave, it's up to you. But at this time, we're going to have Linda Sterling here, and she's going to talk about CDBG.
Thank you, please. Hi, everybody. We're in the process of selecting 2018 CDBG projects for the City of Sunbury. First, I have to announce your allocation actually went up this year. You'll be receiving $296,249. That's an increase of about 10 percent, so that's good. Administration of this grant that will be paid out of the grant and will go to Siedach will be $48,520, which leaves $247,729 for project funding. We received a project request for the Reagan Street Flood Mitigation Project, which is a project that would separate stormwater and sewer lines from front to 4th Streets on Reagan Street. It will replace an existing 15-inch combined sewer stormwater line with a 48-inch line for stormwater only, and it will lay a new sewer line. And then, the street will be repaved after that. That action alone will stop flooding at the underpass. The pump station has the capacity to deal with the rainfall as it currently comes. The reason the Reagan Street Underpass floods is because of that 15-inch combined stormwater sewer line. So, I'm recommending $225,729 of Sunbury's CDBG funding would go toward that project so that we will also be able to apply for a competitive, what's called a competitive grant from DCED, which would give us another $750,000, possibly up to a million dollars for that project if approved, thereby really cutting down on the cost to the city to do the work. Any questions on the Reagan Street project? Yes?
So, is that going to involve the City of Sunbury, or does that have to do with the redevelopment authority?
That's the city. Redevelopment authority, unless I'm confused, would be involved with properties?
I misspoke.
Okay.
The authority at the end of 4th Street?
Oh, the municipal authority. It will, this is work that needs to be done anyway.
For overdue.
Yes, for the municipal authority. I just want to make it clear that for this project, for CDBG, we're just looking at it as a flood control project because it will, it will actually address an issue as soon as it's done, of flooding. But the work will also lay groundwork so that new stormwater and sewer separations within the neighborhood can be, can happen, and then hook into that new big line, which will then be part of the separation that would really, I mean, I don't know how much information you want on that, but...
Linda, can I just jump in there?
Sure.
Pen Dot had that scheduled Reagan Street to be paved in 2019. We were in a meeting with them, they pushed that back to 2020, allowing us to take in a few of the work in 2019. Municipal Authority has made a commitment of over a million dollars plus.
So, it's a collaborative effort?
That's correct. What the grant Linda's referring to, the Municipal Authority with Pen Dot and the City of Sunbury, there's where the projects come together and do Phase 1 of maybe eight phases up through there to do the whole 137 acres, which is consistent from front to, actually 3rd Street now, the line that Linda's referring to does go over to 4th Street, but the separation is from the railroad tracks to front, Reagan North, that whole section up through every year living.
Cape Town.
Cape Town, thank you. It is roughly 137 acres, that's where the project will complete it. That whole area will be separated, stormwater will be in this line eventually, and then sewer lines will be all redone, all the catch faces and so forth.
Not to be sarcastic, but I'm sorry, I don't have my pom-poms. My yard will no longer flood 10 feet from my back door. Woo-hoo! Well, that's, that's not sarcasm, that's wonderful. Yeah, and this is just a phase of that project, but we're separating it out so that beneficiaries can be met, therefore allowing us to use CDBG money, because CDBG funds have to, from the start to the end of the project, you only have three years. The entire project's going to take much longer than that, but we can do this one section and get money for it, and have it have a people benefit by the end of three years. So, yeah, so we will go back again for the rest of the project for other competitive.
So, is Susquehanna Avenue and Edison Avenue involved in that, or is it just Second Avenue?
Susquehanna will be addressing, there's another grant that I'll be applying for Susquehanna. Phase 1, of course, is Reagan Street.
Sure.
There's another phase at the north end, roughly $300,000 project, along the line which is existing through the flood wall, that's going to take care of that section up there. The only reason we're jumping up there, it's an easier one to solve until we get the bigger funding, and this other funding, which will be redone very shortly, is roughly one and three-quarter million dollars, so...
Is that the one off of Solitex property? Ford or something?
It's up there, yes. Yes, it is.
All right, thank you. Sure. Another project that was received is the Sunbury Wetland Park. There was 100, the project would cost around $120,000. There was a CDBG request for $20,000 for that project. There's not enough money to fund all of it, but we can, I'm recommending the city consider funding $10,000 for that project. It'll match a planning grant for ADA compliant and pet-friendly community nature park that restores and protects the wetland habitat area with, I forget the exact address, Mayor, if you want to...
Between Line and Race and 6th and 8th Street.
Thanks.
28.
Any questions on that? So, the plan, go ahead.
All right, they tore down the house how many years ago? For this project, they're supposed to put in their plan to do now.
I don't, I think this is a completely new project, I don't know, there may have been a house torn down.
There were three houses torn down.
For something, for other reasons.
On the right-hand side. They took the underpass out, we had a dump, we had a swamp, and we had their woods. And they came in, they dug up the swamp, and they looked for the gun that was missing. I lived there for 19 years, and, no.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with that.
And we get rainwater from off the hill, at the time we had small pipes, the water back up in the underpass, and come in our cellars. That's the only time we had water.
For, in Reagan Street, or are you talking?
Between Race and Line.
Oh, okay.
The only water we had was when the storm, when rain came down the hill and backed up and there's, or the pass came in the house.
Okay.
We didn't have any water, it was underpass from, from sewer lines. And I'm just upset because it takes so long to get something done. And the grounds and the dump area is safe because Barrett used to dump stuff over there years ago. And we had a six-month fire over there at one time. I'm just suggesting what took place years ago, that's all.
No, I understand, I'm just want to make sure that I'm, so you're just saying there's been problems for a long time, you're not, you're not against or for the project as it stands now?
Well, you already know it's supposed to have been started and never got finished, that's all.
I think that, I think it's been talked about for quite some time, it was under private ownership until, I'm not sure when, and then the land was deeded to the city.
Cycles.
Yeah, as far as the history, that's about all I know.
Well, I checked the ground.
But the, the project is in full force and...
I know there's sinkholes over there, you suck down in. A neighbor put a 20-foot pole down, it disappeared. So, it's a lot, it's a swamp area, it's, there's a lot of soft mud, it sucks everything in, it's just same, but we played in all our lives. That was our playground.
Well, well, I think it can still continue to be a playground, just a safe one.
Would you be surprised what you find over there?
Yeah, just a safe one from here on out. Regina?
Regina Russell, with the wetland, I want to understand, so the, the project is going to cost $120,000, but we're only able to get $30,000 to start the project, and where will the money come from after?
Planning, the, the first $10,000 will be used to match a planning grant that we know is available, that I know is available. Once that planning grant is completed and we, we see what's really necessary and what's needed, then we'll have exact costs that will allow us to apply for other grants.
So, we can complete it?
Yeah. Yeah, there's, there's recreation funding there, there's, there's recreation funding on a federal and a state level. This is a really good project because there's some very historic geology in that area. There's also, it's also adjacent to a school, it's also recreation, it's also natural habitat, so it ties in on a lot of levels to kind of fill out Sunbury's offering of recreational opportunities. I can't say for sure, but I don't anticipate seeing any difficulty for this project. There's, but now in Susquehanna, universities are very excited about it, and it's the sort of thing that usually, it's not difficult to get funding to, to do it.
Will we be able to get additional funds from Safe School Route since it is next to school?
I don't know. The Safe School Routes funding has been collapsed from its own funding source and is now part of something they call Penta, Pennsylvania Transportation, something, something. You can still put in grants for sidewalks, but it doesn't have dedicated funding. It's part of a larger plot now. Sure, yes.
And just to clarify what, just like you said, Barrett was pre-Solitex.
Oh, okay. Yeah, see, I'm, that's way...
I'm just trying to like...
Thank you.
Give you a little history there.
Thank you.
And the, I, I think the GoFundMe won't just be the cherry on the cake, so to speak, because GoFundMe is, is obvious, it shows you how it works, so that's a great...
Yeah, I can't...
Great vehicle.
Thank you.
Like I said, we had found cancers over there, and we were playing around, and we lived, it blew up, and we had an underground fire for six months. They put flame water on it and shoot 20 feet in the air for like six months, like I'm saying, you know, check out what's there to be safe?
Yeah.
That's all. I'm wondering...
Yeah, that's the, that's the very first step, actually. There have been some officials from DEP on...
Mike, did we have anything on record regarding this property being a dump site, or catching fire or anything, do you know? No, I, like...
Well, just a side step. Where Memorial Acres is, at one point, before my time, that was also a dump area. So, there were various dump areas throughout the city.
But it could be like an unofficial dump site, because you did have documented how many thousands of pounds of trash were already taken out of there. So, I think there is certainly evidence that people threw trash away for sure, so it's hard to know at this point. Any other questions on the wetland dog park project? Yes, sir.
Allen Bog, City Leader, I've said it before, but also contains the only remaining right-of-way of the old Moore Railroad. The rest of the right-of-way has been redeveloped.
Wow, well, it looks like, it looks like the mayor's aware of that, so we'll make sure. I know his vision for the area is to have, you know, a walking tour that you can read history through there, so possibly that's the sort of information that will be shared. A third project that came in was from the Greater Susquehanna Valley United Way called Family Success Center. Their idea was to acquire the former Sunbury Middle School to create a community center with childcare, recreation, and family support services. At the first meeting when we talked about this, it turns out that there was some, the re, the property, the middle school property is not under any kind of contract for purchase. Doesn't mean it might not, it's not going to happen. It's a wonderful project. I'm recommending at this time that you put, that Sunbury puts that project on its three-year plan and with strong suggestion to support it, and look for other funding opportunities even next year when we might be able to see what more is needed. And then finally, the Sunbury Fire Department put in a request for fire school grounds improvement. That project would be used to construct a training facility for shipping containers that are already, they already have, and they would put them together and use that to train new firefighters and enhance the skills of existing fire staff. The request for that project is worth $1,000, the total cost of sport.
Linda, can we change that to put that into the Reagan Street project for the apparatus, apparatus, the ambulances and the police, all people that pass through there when that's flooded? We were able to get the CTANs coming in from the Shumogan Dam project.
So, yes, you can change it, I'm just not sure I, tonight, the council needs to vote to select projects that will then be finally approved at public hearing. So, just let me understand, would this $12,000 come to the, the fire department?
No, just go back to the...
The whole Reagan Street grant?
Yes.
Okay. So, so you're saying to draw the $12,000 for the shipping containers and to just put it in with Reagan Street because that will benefit, the fire company needs that to happen more?
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you for your explanation.
Where would the fire school be located?
It's out, it is, we already have brands that can run from the textile mill, from the current textile mill, it's out at the end of Wolverton Street. Great lines are right, yeah, great lines, right lines where their car runs.
So, you will continue, you'll be able to do that?
Correct.
It's just that you feel the $12,000 better served added to the, the current funding for that project.
If you get that passed, if that's passed, we'll...
Thanks, Paul. Well, it's good to see him personally. We talk on the phone, so I haven't seen him. Okay, so, everybody understands that the Sunbury Fire Department allocation recommended for $12,000 would be added now onto the $225,729 for Reagan Street, bringing that to a total of $2,037,729, I think? Ooh, okay, that's a good math grade for me. Now, councils, citizens, anybody, take it from here.
I want to comment, I'm going to make this a fact, the wetlands project is a good project, but the Reagan Street project is more important to social and that community and being the fact working with the conjunctual municipal authority, State Offensive and Pen Dot, and of course, the city and the grant will be relying on $30 of council because we were all making a commitment of over a million dollars. Now, more money to take out of that pot, we decided to find it on Sunbury. So, I'm recommending all the money goes to Reagan Street this year, and, because it's very, very important to get that project Phase 1 to 2019.
Will we be able, the residents be able to see the actual report afterwards? I mean, we're getting bids, you're getting grants?
When, I'm sorry, report about the expenses when we have these different street projects?
When you have a street project and someone does a proposal for that job, and the proposal is accepted, and you keep having these changes done, and are there additional funds requested every time there's a work change?
This isn't a work change, Regina, this is an entirely new project. Chestnut Street is completed.
And no one has bidded on this new project yet?
No. And what you'll see is how this works, every time a bill is approved, you'll hear some bills approved tonight for final Chestnut Street payment, they come before council, which gives them something before the public. So, that's the way the Reagan Street project would work. First, we need to get an engineer that would plan out what the project would cost. Then, at that point, we can go out on bid, the bids are competitively procured, we have to, you know, we have to give everyone equal opportunity to bid in the project, it's an open competitive process, there's a bid opening that would be either here or at Siedach. Then, that bid that was the lowest would come back here for council to approve. So, yeah, there's, there is opportunity all along the way, if you're coming to council meetings, to hear how that project is progressing.
Now, I understand that process. My question is, is it, do you find that a lot of times, we, when you accept a, a bid, that there are more monies needed because that bid was not accurate? It may have been the lowest bid, but then you'll come back asking for more money for incidentals?
No.
That doesn't happen?
That can't happen, that would be illegal. However, if something comes up that was unexpected and was not part of the bid, say there's, in the course of doing a project, you find out that there's an additional work that really should be done. On Chestnut Street, there was an example where they needed a right-of-way that the Pen Dot required that they weren't aware of. That right-of-way required building a wall. So, I don't know how much that wall was, it was a small amount, but even that small amount, had to come back, had to come through council, had to be approved as what's called a change order.
Yes.
So, that it could go through onto the bid and be added to the already existing bid. When that, when the contractor gives you the bid?
Yes.
That's all the money they get.
So, in that, when they make that bid, this is when I get a little confused with the bids that we accept. When they make that bid, it's accepted, shouldn't there be a line item in there that says something for the unexpected so that the council knows when they're bidding? The bid came in at $200,000, but we're going to put an extra $50,000 for incidentals?
No, there's no such thing as incidentals in the competitive...
It may be the wrong terminology, but...
Well, no, I understand what you're getting at, but the competitive bidding process is very precise. You've bid exactly on what the engineer tells you the project is about. If something else comes up, you come back, explain why you need it, and vote on it again. So, no, there's no kind of like lump sum for just in case we need it. That's not something that would be allowed in the competitive bidding process.
I have a reason for asking that, but thank you.
Okay, sure.
When, when these projects go on, does Cog request or require like a progress report on where monies are going and so forth?
The state requires it, HUD requires it, we file tons of paperwork quarterly, the state just came in and monitored the projects before Chestnut Street. Chestnut Street will be monitored in another couple of years, it's very, 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 very monitored.
I was just thinking of a standpoint from NIH grant, because I, I get involved with the NIH grants, so I just was not sure how Siedach worked all that. And a comment to the dispersments of these monies, the fire company just generously gave money to the Reagan Street project.
Well, they withdrew their, they withdrew their request.
Right, right. So, I think the wetland project also serves the community, and that should be considered. I more than understand the Reagan Street program, believe me. Water 10 feet from my back door, I more than understand that. But, the wetland project is also important to the city. Yeah, I just have a, I'm a little confused, did you see the Chestnut Street project was finished?
Not completely, it still has to be paved, but according to the CDBG work, there was three phases, the third phase is the paving. As far as I understand, the first two phases are substantially complete, we receive final billing for that.
Yes.
Okay. So, the only thing left is paving, which is waiting until you actually get your 2017 CDBG money, and then it would be final paving.
Okay. The hearing Thursday night here, Phase 3, sidewalks and curbs.
Okay.
It's funded, I just to Pen Dot.
Did you, did you hear that, ma'am? There's also other parts of the Chestnut Street project, sidewalks and curbs is funded through a Pen Dot grant. So, there's, there's a lot of, Sunbury's engineer and council is very proactive at pulling together money to get everything that needs to be done on the street done at one time, because overall, it saves money in the long run.
Do you have an idea when that, that project's going to be finished, then, Jimmy? How does that work?
We have it here Thursday night, the contractor will be here answering questions. We have it here Thursday night, the contractor will be here answering questions. And the start-up date should be within a week or so after Thursday. We should be notified Thursday night when they're gonna start the last phase of the sidewalks curving. And we'll be on for bids next month for the paving aspect, which will be done in October, on the sidewalks and curving. They're not sure if they're gonna do it in three phases out through there, or just wait till it's all done and pave it all at one time. Those answers will be out next week.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, these are good questions, yes?
All right, the project next to High Rise and the apartment house on Front Street, why did it take so long to finish that?
I'm not sure that I, do, does anyone at the table know which project you're referring to? I don't, I don't understand which project you're referring to.
The riverfront apartments, the driveway, that was ripped out for almost eight months. It says it's supposed to have been a three-month project or something, and up the alley to Chestnut Street. Why did it take so long?
Well, we put forty-eight-inch line across, and we had bore under Front Street. Here, again, it'd be the same size line we're putting at Reagan Street. We brought it over to Chestnut, brought it out to Chestnut, that's why we have no flooding in Chestnut anymore because of the forty-eight-inch line we ran down through.
Thank you.
So CECOG's role in project selection is to collect all the projects that come in to the objective to make sure that we pass all the information on all the projects to the public, give the public the opportunity to comment on those projects, and then I make recommendations based on how I think your money could be spent. Could. The council are the people who make the final determination about how the money will be spent. CECOG does not have a vote in that at all. We're an administrator, we're, we're paid through administration money from the grant, and we're here to really facilitate the program on behalf of the city. So my part here has done, I've presented information. It's really now to the council, to the slide, how to allocate their CDPG funds. Do you need any more information from me? Do you have the information you need, you think, to make the vote?
Do you want that to sit there? I make the motion that all the money goes towards the Reagan Street project. In a second?
I'll second it.
Reichtner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister? Karlovic?
No.
Kramer?
Yes.
Thank you, Linda.
Sure, thank you, duly noted. Okay, I am next on the agenda, so bear with me.
Yes, Beverly Mercer, regarding the wetlands, I...
Wait, I, I shouldn't, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have. I don't have the floor regarding the wetlands, so I don't know, Jim, you here?
Yeah, sure.
I just want, I just wanted to make a comment also. I recently moved back to Sunbury, so I'm getting a feel for what's happening here. And I think the wetlands is extremely beneficial to the city. I think it cleans up that area, it certainly would provide education for the children here, for the citizens. I think it needs to be recovered, and I think...